Think you'll be able to be seen if you come over here when you make public comments. I'm not positive about that. So, is that, is that chair in view down here?
Yeah, that chair is perfectly in view. You guys are all in view. Are you recording?
Yep.
I'm just letting people in. Yeah, we haven't set up with, uh, with your mother.
How you doing?
Oh, wow.
I'm always nervous before meetings.
I would.
Said I'm always nervous.
Wait till your chair next year. Wait till your chair next year. Give me that, give me your hand. I'll calm you down. I can calm you down.
Oh, it's the blood pressure.
It's the coffee.
I know.
Jeez. He drinks it 24/7.
That's the hard one to give up.
He takes one to bed with him, I think. Oh, tell your beloved bride that my, finally, my cosmonaut, it was really slow starting, but it's budding now, finally.
I'll tell her.
And I, and I still appreciate that very much. Cosmonaut, cosmonaut Volkov.
Yeah, she, she took a friend of mine around to all of her stuff the other day. And back and said.
Slide over a little closer, Mike, so that, when you get down here, so you can be seen.
So you can be on screen too, Mike?
Oh, is I hiding that over there to you? Uh, you know.
He said, how did she know the names of all that stuff? She reads a book and it all stays there.
You know what happens to, yeah, it leaks out through my ears.
This training will be out of my head before I get to my truck.
Five o'clock? Are we recording?
Yep.
I'm gonna, we're on screen now. You can keep eating. Just say, you know, you got it. I know. It's okay. It's okay. Um, good afternoon. This is the, it is Thursday, January 21st. It's five o'clock. We're in the community room at the city county building. This is the meeting, uh, the monthly meeting of the planning board for Park County. Welcome everybody here. Uh, we have four members of the board with us here today, uh, including Brian Wells, Christine Nelson, Taya Cromley, and myself, John Hyke. Three others are excused. Uh, unfortunately, one with, who came down with a positive case of COVID yesterday in one hand and one away on business. So we have a quorum and will continue. Are there any conflicts of interest of any board members regarding items on the agenda today? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll move on. Uh, our last meeting was in May. Um, it was a Zoom meeting. Uh, the minutes were provided to you by the planning office. Uh, and if there are any corrections, I'd like to hear them now. If not, we'll entertain a, a motion and second for approval of the meetings. Are there any comments or questions? I hear none from the board. I look for a, a motion to approve then. Moved by Taya. Second is by Christine. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes. Um, I don't think we have any scheduled public comments today, correct? Oh, and by the way, uh, uh, our planning staff, both Lawson and Mike are here today too, just so everybody is aware of that. Um, are there any public comments from, uh, those here present, um, that are not on the agenda? I'll ask for the folks in the hall first, and I see Ann raising her hand. Come over here, Ann, and introduce yourself and tell us your address.
Uh, Ann, hello, I'm Ann.
Sit down. Be, be comfortable.
Uh, here, Box 1445, Livingston. Uh, I just wanted to know, did you put a notice on the fairgrounds door in case there were people that thought your meeting was at the fairgrounds, the way it had been previously scheduled for July 21st?
We did not put a, a notice, but we notified the, uh, fairgrounds manager that had been canceled.
I just thought if people show up, uh, they might want to read your address to come here.
That's also been on our website.
It was updated. Thank you. Any other public comments? Any public comments from the folks online? I don't know. I see a couple of folks online. And it looks like, um, there's a hand raised. Um, Sabrina?
Yes, hi. Thank you. Uh, my name is Sabina Strauss. I live in Gardner. And I just wanted to ask the planning board if they have, uh, if they have a timeline or what the process will be for the Gardner neighborhood plan. Because my understanding is the committee will be presenting it to the board. And my concern is that post-flood, we're not going to get a lot of public participation. And so I'm concerned that as it stands, the neighborhood plan does not have enough community support. And if it comes before the board in the next, I don't know, month or two, I, I, I don't believe that the Gardner community is going to be able to be involved because right now they're dealing with disastrous status of their businesses and their livelihoods.
Let me ask you a point of clarification then. Um, if, I'm assuming that you are speaking on behalf of, of, um, the group that put that together. Am I correct?
No, that is not correct.
Okay.
I, I, I volunteered to be part of that committee and I have recently resigned. So now I am speaking as a concerned citizen about the process going forward. Um, and I'm concerned about the lack of public input. And I'm concerned if it goes forward now, we're not going to get any public input.
We will, um.
I can respond to that.
Yes, please, Mike, and then we can add it to the agenda if necessary.
So Sabina, if, um, the Gardner neighborhood plan is presented to this board, um, it won't go to this board right out of the gate. It will go to the county commissioners. The county commissioners would have to consider whether or not they want to start the formal process of considering it as an addendum to the growth policy, if that's what the committee is recommending. And if the commission made that determination in the affirmative, then we would have to go through the legal notices and have a public hearing similar to this one with the planning board. And then they would make a recommendation to county commissioners. But the board can't consider it until the county commissioners authorize the beginning of that process.
Okay, so if I'm understanding correctly, it's, uh, it's going to go first to the commissioners, then to you. I thought it was actually coming to you folks first, then to the commissioners. So I have it backwards.
Yep, the commissioners have to, they're the only ones who have the authority to begin the process of updating or modifying a growth policy. And if they do start that formal process, it will go to the planning board for consideration in a public hearing. And then they would make a recommendation back to the commissioners, um, either approve, conditionally approve, or deny. And the commission would make a final decision. But the commissioners have to initiate that process.
But the first step is going to be that the plan will be presented to you then?
Nope. If you present it to the board, it's still going to go to the commission first. The board is not going to have any consideration or discussion about it until the commission authorizes that process.
Okay, so at which point are we going to make sure that there is enough public support for this plan? Is it going to be at the stage of the planning board or at the stage where it's in front of the county commission?
That's just part of the consideration that both the board and the commissioners will have to take into account when they're, when they're going through that process.
The answer is both.
Okay. Um, well. Okay, uh, thank you for the information. I just wanted to raise the awareness of the planning board that, um, I am concerned with this coming forward without enough Gardner community support. And, um, I just wanted to go on public record, say that. Thank you.
Other public comments?
I'm just here to.
Welcome, welcome. Hearing none? Um, Mike, can you explain to us, we are, we are, been called upon to, to take up a discussion uh, and a recommendation regarding the housing action plan to the, um, to the 2017 Park County growth policy. Um, and Mike, could you explain a little bit what we are called upon to do at this point? And why this is a bit different than our average meetings right now?
Okay. So this will be considered a formal public hearing. So similar to what Sabina was just asking about. So the housing coalition put together a housing action plan that's gone through years in the making, and they finally have a final draft. Um, that draft was presented to this board, um, and the board moved it up to the county commission level. Um, and the county commissioners made the decision to ask staff and the planning board to start the formal process of considering it as an addendum to the growth policy. They also set parameters that the board would only consider the housing action plan and not get into other aspects of the growth policy as part of this consideration. So once they made that decision, then staff has to run legal notice of the public hearing in the enterprise. And then we have, we hold this public hearing. We take public comment. We've been taking public comment, uh, since that time. And the role of this board is to hear from the housing coalition about the housing action plan. Um, you can ask questions, get clarification. We will take public comment. And then this board will consider the public comment and the housing action plan and make a determination in the form of a recommendation to the county commissioners as to whether, whether to include and adopt the housing action plan as an addendum to the Park County growth policy, um, or not.
And we can make that determination, if appropriate, during the course of this very hearing today or, or postpone it for further investigation and for us to review comments, public comments, as appropriate for a future meeting.
Correct. So once, once you close the public hearing, so once you take a public comment and you've exhausted the opportunity for a public comment, you can close the public hearing. And then the board will go into its deliberations and discussion. Um, depending upon how many comments we get, if you feel that you can go through them during this meeting, then you can actually get through and make a recommendation. If you want more time to be able to read the comments and, and consider them individually, we can recess that portion of the meeting to a future. We have to specify the date and time if we're going to recess it, and then you would convene and finish that. But it'll just depend on how many comments. We've received three so far in advance. Um, and I don't know how many we'll receive online, but so far it's looking like we may do it.
Thank you. So, uh, we are now suspending our meeting and opening this hearing. It's a public hearing. And it's regarding, uh, the, adding the housing action plan to the 2017 Park County growth policy um, as it is written. Um, and, um, the floor is open for public comments.
Want to hear from?
And Lila is going to, uh, well, whomever from you are, you're going to speak a little bit in terms of what it is that, uh, you're asking us to do here today, correct?
Sure.
Please, Ann, introduce yourself and your address and where you're from.
John, I don't think you can.
121.
Wendy has a, Wendy has a, she probably.
Okay, thank you very much. I can't see that. Go ahead, Lila.
Thanks for having me. Uh, Lila Fishman. I am with HRDC. HRDC is a community action agency and our Livingston office is at 121 South Second Street. Um, I am in our community development department and we have been working with the housing coalition and a number of partners through that work, uh, for the past couple of years to develop and lead a strategy to implement a housing action plan focused on local housing solutions. So you might recall, um, when we brought the draft plan to you in January, um, we brought the final plan in April and then further discussion of the meeting. Uh, the, the housing action plan looks at a combination of resources, tools, and strategies available that our 12-person housing working group, a subgroup of the housing coalition, has deemed appropriate to look at the balance needed of increasing access to homes that people can afford, increasing the supply of homes, programs, um, ways to incentivize additional homes, um, the quality of homes through rehab programs, ready, the tools. See, most of you have it printed in front of you. It's also available on parkcountyhousing.com as well as the needs assessment. And that's some supporting documentation of what we found to be the housing needs last year, uh, when we completed that. Since publishing the plan in April, we have also conducted two open houses, uh, one in Livingston and one in Gardner, to help promote opportunities to engage with the housing coalition and let people know, um, what some of those next steps would be. So we have probably 30 people at both of those, and those were in, maybe in May. Um, also since we have finished the plan, the city has adopted the housing action plan as a supplement to the city growth policy at their June meeting. And we have launched three subcommittees of the housing coalition to address some of the near-term priorities and, uh, continue our conversations with the city as well as the county of how governmental work, governmental, um, organizations can play a role in that in addition to the members in the Park County Housing Coalition and the organizations that are represented with that. So those three subcommittees are focused on, um, developing a community investment fund. There are some dedicated volunteers looking at data tracking and storytelling around housing. And then there is a group looking at workforce housing solutions. And that's most likely because of who is able to participate in that, really looking at kind of programming and what we can do in the near term to help align the housing that's available in Park County with residents that are living and working in those needs. So we'll dive into some, collect some more data and information from people with rentals available and discuss kind of how we can create that match and provide some more information of that while we address and work on some long-term solutions through the plan and look at how we can add homes for residents to live. I think of the most of the topics. I received a couple, um, comments already, but I think I'll wait for that and be available for questions as they come up. Hopefully this isn't new information at this point.
I think that, uh, all the board members have looked things over very carefully and participated with you. Are there other, any other, uh, comments from HRDC at this point? Okay, thank you very much.
Actually, sorry, John. Sorry, Lila. Um, I was just, I think it is maybe helpful, um, to clarify because I think there was some confusion around HRDC's role. If you could just clarify what your role was in the development of this plan, what your role will be in implementing.
Yeah, that's great. I was wondering.
Something that happened in the city.
Around now, and, uh, and as you said, anything else. So HRDC, um, and other, HRDC and Park County Community Foundation came together in 2020 to bring this group together. Um, when we moved into more of the policy implementation phase, it made more sense for HRDC to lead that section of the work. Uh, we have collectively several decades of development experience working in housing policy in the state. So HRDC is focused on the capacity building around the housing coalition, um, in the short term. And then in the long term, we hope that that organization can kind of be its own resounding organization to help continue to play a partner role in the implementation. HRDC, of course, will continue to be a partner and, um, part of that. But long term, it's possible that the housing coalition will kind of break out on its own, similar to some work that we did at Big Sky with the Big Sky City Housing Trust. I think that I can still take questions later.
Sure.
As I come over. So I'll let somebody use the chair. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, Wendy and Keith.
Wendy and Keith. Wendy Riley.
Hey there.
The floor is yours.
Thank you, thank you. Um, hi, I'm Wendy Riley. I live at 145 Hercules Road in Immigrant. And I'm, uh, board president for Park County Environmental Council, PCEC. And I just wanted to make a few comments on, um, on this topic. First, I'd like to thank the HRDC staff and members of the Park County Housing Working Group uh, for their really great work over the past couple of years studying housing in Park County and, um, compiling information for this housing, um, action plan. Uh, PCEC submitted a letter to the planning board on Tuesday asking you to adopt this plan as an addendum to the growth policy. And I want to underscore this recommendation. Um, in the county's 2017 growth policy, specifically objective 14.1, uh, the county commits to, in a quote, "preparing a house, housing plan for all of Park County that identifies affordable housing needs and targets, identifies possible funding sources, and pinpoints implementation partners," close quote. Um, while the growth policy addresses housing, the information is out of date and inadequate to fully address today's concerns. An example of this is, is the average home price. Um, the growth policy refers to the average home price in 2014 as $210,000. Uh, contrast that with June of this year where the median list price was $717,000 or two and a half times more. That's just one of the many changes that have happened over the, these years. Um, recent polls in the region have shown housing is the number one concern of residents. We've seen large employers like Chico Hot Springs, Sage Lodge, and Xantera having to buy or build housing to retain workers. Um, housing problems such as these have greatly increased, uh, since the growth policy was adopted. The housing action plan before you took two hard years of, of volunteer work and underwent an extensive public process involving over 300 participants, uh, within the county. Uh, this plan also includes 12 strategies for consideration by the county. And like the growth policy, is a non-regulatory document. The growth policy would be greatly enhanced with the addition of this plan by providing much-needed analysis and steps for moving ahead. As a practical matter, um, how will the planning board otherwise fulfill objective 14.1 in the growth policy? If this plan isn't adopted, would you spend money hiring consultants who would lead a similar public process, which would take another two years if you started now? We suggest you adopt the plan before you now and get on with the work needed to get after our county's serious housing issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Uh, Kate Stewart? I see your hand raised. No more.
Wyatt has to stand up.
Uh.
Wyatt?
Wyatt. I see somebody named Wyatt. If you'd identify yourself and give us your address, please.
Yeah, no problem. This is, uh, Wyatt Wyndham, 128 Star Road, Livingston, Montana, just around the corner for you. Sorry, I was running late on a meeting, so I thought I'd come into Zoom, but normally I'd like to be there. Uh, just wanted to speak in favor of the agenda item to, to recommend the adoption of the housing action plan against the growth policy. I think, um, I was involved in the process. I'm still involved in the process, done a lot of work with the city in relation to it. And I think if you, kind of as you read through it, it just gives a good summation of sort of the available tools in the current state of the union. I also appreciate that it doesn't necessarily make policy recommendations, just provides a shared platform for the city to, and the county to adopt things that they think are important. So, anyway, just wanted to speak in favor of it and just keep doing the good work. I, I appreciate the document. I like the county's growth plan too, so hopefully those things all come together.
Thank you, Wyatt. I see no additional public comments from Zoom. Are there additional public comments from the floor here? Yeah, okay. I'll wait a second then.
I'm, I'm here. Am I too late?
You are not too late, Kate.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Go ahead. It's okay.
A call hangup would bounce me off. So, um, my name is Kate Stewart. I'm at, uh, 2759 US Highway 89 South, just south of Immigrant. And, um, along with Brian Wells, I've been facilitating the Park County conversations over the past number of months that, uh, brings together residents on, uh, different sides of an, an issue. Um, to have open conversations with one another and explore commonalities and underlying interests and, and ways that they can reach solutions together and make recommendations without actually abandoning their individual positions. So from that perspective, um, I today sent a letter to the commissioners because I thought it would be more appropriate to do that, but I would like to read from that letter. Um, because my concern is not so much with what's being considered today. Uh, it's more how this can be used as an opportunity to, um, improve and further the public information and public engagement process. So that, that's really my interest here. So I'd like to just read parts of this letter to you. So I do want to commend the HAP committee for the hard work and commitment to crafting solutions to address the serious need for affordable housing in our county. What they've done is, is really impressive and hats off. Um, my concern lies in the potential that the process of adding the HAP to the growth policy will be perceived by county residents reminiscent of the, uh, process in the recent proposed county-wide land use draft. So I'm, I'm really asking, uh, the commission and maybe you all to consider what you can do from your perspective as well, how we can do better to inform and engage citizens who will be impacted by these decisions. Um, so I'm asking the commission to look at some best practices in terms of, uh, public information and public engagement processes and consider how those can be applied to this directly. Um, so what I'm, what I'm requesting today really has nothing to do with whether you decide to go forward with this recommendation or not, but just to consider if you do go forward, how you might support, uh, what I'm asking for here. So there are a few things that I think that may provoke some potentially problematic public perceptions in what we have here. And again, these are not my opinions. These are things that I'm hearing. Um, and I'm looking at it from a, a professional standpoint. While most of the 12 HAP tools will not directly impact most county residents, several will. In particular, tool 11, the short-term rental regulation, is eliciting concern among some rural residents who perceive that the impact of STRs is different in towns such as Gardner than it is in rural areas, where STRs actually make it possible sometimes for generations to stay on their land. Um, also, the HAP committee made extensive and commendable efforts to engage the public. Unfortunately, many people did not respond due to limited time and the perception that the, I mean, their limited time, not, not the limited time that was given to them. It was the perception of, of how they would use their time. Um, and the perception that the affordable housing issue does not impact them directly. Uh, whether that's accurate or not, I'm concerned about the response when these residents realize that the HAP growth policy contains elements that in fact do affect them directly without a public information and engagement process. Um, we may again see many of the sometimes inaccurate interpretations and related feelings of disempowerment and lack of inclusion. The HAP rightly advocates for data collection, which I'm thrilled to hear. and an in-depth community process to develop a values-driven policy with regard to Tool 11. However, prior to this community process, the growth policy via the added HAP will clearly recommend the establishment of a maximum percentage of dwelling units. That's one of the two recommendations under Tool 11. The HAP engagement process was far more extensive than the recent land use draft process, and it was consistent with the draft, with the growth policy goals. However, notification through the Gardner newsletter, the Livingston enterprise, and partner listservs likely did not reach the majority of county residents. I attended the P C E C webinars, which were excellent and informative. However, only residents on the P C E C mailing list were aware of them. There's no question that the task of informing the whole public is daunting, but failure to do so results in negative consequences for all. So I am making recommendations to the commissioners that we adapt best practices that have been compiled and created by the Minnesota Office of Collaboration and Dispute Resolution. They're known nationwide for excellent work in public engagement. They draw from best practices from the leading organizations and associations, and they provide a lot of resources to states and counties who want to do this. So that's something we're going to be working on. And as I said, my focus is not on this specific issue, but more on how we can begin to think more broadly and deeply about good, healthy public engagement that will grow community and garner support for the policies that we need to support our community and our county. So that's what I have to say. Thank you very much for allowing me to say it.
You're welcome. I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
My question is, just as a point of clarification, you're looking at a very macro level in terms of public engagement and alignment around particular issue standards, whatever. Do you have specific comments that I could glean from that regarding what you would see as being a timeline, if you will, for this policy being put as an addendum? Does that make sense to you, Kate, what I'm saying?
It does. Yeah, I don't even know, honestly, John, if that's the appropriate thing to do at this point because there has been public engagement around it. I think that, given that these are recommendations, and if they are appended to the growth policy, they'll be appended, as I understand it, as recommendations. I think it would be really, really important maybe to send some sort of addendum along with it if you do vote to go forward that recommends to the commissioners that they add, I don't know how it would be added, some kind of an additional policy document that states that if they do decide to go forward on some of these recommendations that impact the community, that they follow a very robust informing and public engagement process. I think that, you know, as long as we have something in place that will ensure that that happens when the time comes, that may be the more appropriate place to do it. I don't want to slow things down necessarily. I just want to make sure that we're able to tell people, you know, very transparently what's going on, what it is, what it isn't, and how they're protected and what their role can be. Does that answer your question?
Mostly, thanks. I'm still looking for that magic bullet. Okay, robust communication. You know, I get it, but that's not for you to answer now, but that's something that I've got, I think we all are concerned about.
Well, I will tell you, John, that we're putting together a draft plan to present to the commission, and we can certainly present it to you as well in terms of how we think these Minnesota best practices can be adapted to our community with resources that we have. So that will be available, and there will be specifics in that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And that should be next week, by the way.
You know, it would be great to see what that Minnesota plan looks like. I'm ignorant about it, sorry. But if that could be, you know, how the. Oh, you gave it to me. Oh, I've got it here.
You've got, you've got some of the documents. That's, that's just a small portion. I'd be happy to send some links to the board members and the staff so that you can have a look at that.
If we could share that with the public more and have a link that we could do that with. So if you send it to the planning office, they'll handle it from there.
Perfect. I'll do that. Thank you.
Any other public comments in the queue that you see, Lawson? Okay. Are there any other comments? Ann has a comment.
Ann Holloway, 1445, was just something that Kate said that I thought went in here. As far as communication goes, it's a very complicated plan that you've written. And it's very in-depth, and it's full of people who understand special things. For those of us who don't.
Ann, Ann, address the board. I know, address the board, okay?
Sorry.
That's okay.
For those who don't understand all those things, the definitions, I found very helpful. However, I would like to ask them if they might give us even more in-depth definitions of those, I think one person called them tools. They were numbered. I don't have the plan in front of me, one through 10 or 12 or whatever. Perhaps even to have pros and cons of each type of tool to let people, help them to decide when they thought one might be more appropriate than another. Because as a for instance, there's things like land trust or land banking, which sounds wonderful until you realize that, at least in my understanding, that land that is held by the nonprofit is taken off the tax roll. So what you're doing is shifting the tax burden to the rest of the citizens. And I think it's important for people to have the understanding of those nuances, all of these different types of rules and programs, so they can make more balanced decisions as a situation will come up. Is this appropriate for here, or is that a better idea? Oh, I'm sorry, I haven't explained that very well.
No, you've done fine. You've done fine.
As Kate just said, the more we can all understand each other, the better. So if these folks over here that I'm not supposed to look at, if they could think of some way to even more refine their definition, it would be helpful for citizens. Larger, whatever you want to call it.
Citizens.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Land, just as a point of clarification, trusts do not go off the tax rolls. Generally correct? Trusts do not go off the tax rolls generally.
Well, H R D C is not on the tax roll.
But they, they wouldn't be the holder of the trust either.
Well, they have trust, they have land trust lands here in Park County.
Do you?
Which are not taxed.
And they're off the tax rolls then?
So, yeah.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that.
And it can be, I mean, whatever your nonprofit name is, I don't know if it's the same for everybody, but it's certainly something people should know. Thank you. You can comment.
Hi, I'm Brenda, H R D C, 122 South Second Street. Just wanted to provide a comment in response to that. Typically, any land trust that's held with a nonprofit, that the reason they're held with a nonprofit is to ensure affordability and perpetuity. And usually in every development, whether it's multifamily or single-family, et cetera, that consideration, whether or not to submit that application, it's not automatic property tax exemption. And there are specific laws that describe what is tax exempt eligible, what is not, particularly with affordable housing. But that decision is typically made in conjunction with the community that we're developing that development in. For example, we recently did a remodel on a tax credit development in Belgrade. And as part of working with the city of Belgrade and putting that development together, it was determined it was not in the best interest of that community to come off the tax roll. So it was not, the application was not permitted to pull off the tax roll. So it's not automatic. Those decisions are made on an individual property level basis at a time with a partner or community. It's not a direct one-for-one oftentimes, particularly in land trusts because they're keeping affordability. That's one of the ways that they are able to do that is by not having the property tax. However, those decisions are made on a one-on-one.
Thank you. Hearing no other public comments. Can we ask questions of people? We closed the hearing, and then can we ask, can we ask questions of others then? Okay, hearing no further public comments regarding this topic. The hearing is closed. Now, we can have an opportunity to decide what to do at this point. I, we have to consider all the public comments. We will do that. We have the public comments that came to us. There were three written public comments that came to us. One that Wendy summarized from Park County Environmental Council. One from Marcy Han-Khanaf, I hope I'm pronouncing her name correctly. And one from Kent Hannah-Walt, and we've gotten the comments here. So I guess the question I would say is, the floor is open amongst board members for any discussions or comments that you have at this point. And we do have folks here that we can ask questions of also. Of course, it's okay. Go.
I'll probably take about three minutes.
Yeah, right.
I know a lot of folks spent a lot of time working on this housing plan, and they deserve a big thank you, and I mean that. One thing I love about this plan is I believe it was written by citizens, and I think that's awesome. Having said that, I think when there is a recommendation that could down the road affect someone's right to make a living on their own property, that's a big deal. I don't want to dissect the housing plan. That is something the people in rural Park County absolutely have the right to do. So springing this on them without making a monumental effort to include them in the drafting of this plan is just wrong, in my opinion. And I'm talking about rural Park County, not Gardner, not Livingston, rural Park County. And I also know, because I know some of the people that were on the group that put this together, I know that they tried hard to include everyone in rural areas of the county, but it didn't work. Because I guarantee you, most of the people in rural Park County never heard of this. And, and that's not good. We have to do better. I know it's not regularly, I know it's not regulatory, but it is a big step in that direction. Most folks in rural Park County have no idea we were about to recommend something that could eventually affect their property rights. To quote the commissioners from the zoning issue, quote, "We need to do better with public engagement." And there is such a lack of trust in the county, and that is, I'm sure, an unintended consequence of not making a huge effort to engage them in these very consequential proposals, proposals. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Brian. Other comments from board members?
Well, I had a question. Maybe Mike can answer this. Because I do think what has come up a lot is regarding Item 11, the Short Term Rental Regulation. And some of the language might be, to Brian's point, if you're not aware of it, it could be a bit frightening. What, what would be required, you know, when you use the word regulation, what would be required for a short-term rental to be regulated? What kind of process?
Well, short-term rentals are already regulated. They're required to have a license, the state of Montana, and registered through the health department. It's a $45 licensing fee, I believe. Some jurisdictions do consider and adopt regulations of short-term rentals, but that depends on whether you're a municipality or whether you're rural, like a county. The only way counties would be able to regulate short-term rentals would be through zoning. So if the commissioners at any future date wanted to consider that, they would have to go through the Part II zoning process, which they had just recently begun and stopped. The city, if they were to regulate short-term rentals, they could do it through zoning. There's probably a host of other things that they could do. Some counties increase the licensing fees and do a better job inspecting short-term rentals to make sure that they're safe and that they meet certain standards. The $45 licensing fee probably is very minimal in terms of that inspection. So you're right. Could lead to that, but just like everything else in the growth policy, it requires process.
Remind me of the definition of short-term rental.
Less than 30 days.
Under 30 days. 30 days is a long-term, long-term rental.
We have regulations for long-term rentals too, called buildings for lease of rent, depending upon the number and the type. And those are on the books. Those are the new law that was adopted in 2013.
Other questions from the board members?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Christina.
So if we adopt this, there are processes that have to take place for each and every.
We're recommending that it be adopted. We're not adopting, yeah, yeah, that's okay.
And, but if there's, for anything to be moved forward on any of, whether it be the housing or the vacation rental, any of that, it has a process, it has to go through to.
And you know, what's interesting, the county is already looking at short-term rentals. They have been for probably five years. Health department's concerned about them, the fire department's concerned about them, COVID really called them into question because there was no way to notify people that don't live and reside permanently at a residence. There's a lot of them. We've hired companies to look at how many there are in Park County. A lot of people come to the county and the city complain. So there's ongoing discussion. The county commission and the city commission would not need a housing action plan that recommended any consideration of short-term rental management or whatever. They could still move that forward if they were compelled to.
I'm just curious that if we recommend that they adopt this, then, and they do, then that locks more stuff in place.
I think that, you know, when you look at a policy like this, like the growth policy, we heard this with the growth policy. People that were against it didn't like it because they thought that it would lead to regulation. because they thought that it would lead to regulation. And they, that's a legitimate concern. The, the policy itself didn't specifically say, go out and regulate everything. What it talked about were issues, goals and objectives, and it talked about implementation. And what people often don't realize is when it comes to solving any of these issues, we are confined by state law in what we can do and how we can do it. And so regardless of this plan or the growth policy, we have to follow state law if we're going to consider anything. What growth policies do, other than meet the requirements of state law, is they provide a roadmap, kind of a guiding document, so that the county can go through and identify those areas and, and work towards implementation. It sets that direction, like a vision, visionary document. Maybe I'll just speak a little bit about the benefits of these types of plans.
Yeah, that's right. Go, go ahead.
I mean, what people don't recognize, I was talking to John, the county since 2012, we just surpassed $43 million in funding through our grants and special projects administrator, Kristin Galbraith. One of the things that she appreciated about Park County when she came on, and she continues to encourage, is constantly keeping your plan updated. Every time we apply for any funding of any kind, we have to show that the community's buying or behind it. And you do that by showing that you've put your trails plan in place and your active transportation plan in place, and your capital improvements plan in place, and your growth policy in place, and your housing action plan in place, whatever other plan, because when it comes to funding, state and federal agencies want to see that your community supports it. And it's those planning documents that require public participation, public comment opportunities that can help show that, versus no plans in place, and all of a sudden you have a commission that decides they want a trail or they want something, and so they apply for a grant. Well, those people don't know if the community's behind it, or is it just the commission at that moment in time. So those planning documents become really from a funding perspective and for allocation of resources.
Well, and to your point about is the community behind it, what Ann was saying and what my friend Brian was saying, we, we don't have the magic sauce for getting more involvement. We just, I mean, you know, the Minnesota guidelines can be helpful, but I, I look at this as not being a rule. I don't look at it even as necessarily being something that we aspire to do in the long term. I look at it as an enabling mechanism to help us to find out if it's appropriate to move in, in a particular direction. And one could often say about me that I think about things in a more omnibus, larger range, bigger, more complex, more linked together section. I am just really, really concerned about two things, too many things, never mind my grandchildren, a few other things. But number one, we don't have enough people to work here, to live here, to support what our county aspires to be, even if it aspires to be what it is today and making it better itself. And number two, if, if we, if we don't have the people, the major reason is that they either don't live here, don't want to live here, can't afford to live here, in a American dream, to quote the governor's comments yesterday, kind of way. So here's the conundrum, folks. I mean, do we, you know, and Ann makes great points too, like we need more definitions. I get it. And Brian's points are really well taken. How do we get this to be driven bottom up? Your constant comment, bottom up, by the people. But how do we do it in a way that deals with what we've got going on right now? I'll be darned if I've got the answer to it. I'm more willing to put stuff in and look at it from an aspirational perspective, realizing that a roadmap, you know, sometimes you stay on the big four-lane road, and sometimes you take the side roads, and sometimes you go, you know, East River Road, or, or whatever. So I'm, I'm, I'm open to anything else that my fellow board members have to say.
Yeah, I would have a question, maybe. And maybe I'm reading this thing wrong, but it seems to me like it talks about limiting SDRs. I'm, I'm wondering, how many people on the, what was there, 12 people in the group? 12 or 14? How many, how many people in, in the group were STR owners? It's, it's the biggest industry in the county, I believe.
You're welcome to respond here.
Yeah, I believe it's the biggest industry in the county. I would, I would think that it should have had some, a lot of representation on, on that committee, and also long-term rental owners.
And I might just add that that speaks some to, I think you got a copy of this comment from Marcy.
I didn't get that one, but yeah.
But I'm, I'm afraid the long-term rental owners or the SDRs, the SDRs in, in rural Park County are not, are not going to like the fact that there's talk about limiting how many SDRs there can be. It's, I mean, we don't want any gold mining, we don't want any asphalt plants, and myself included, don't want any heavy industrial stuff. So people have figured out a way to make a living with short-term rentals that are about as low impact as you could possibly find. And I don't, I didn't, I didn't, kind of didn't want to get in the weeds on that, but anyway, just a thought.
Questions to be answered, comments from?
Yeah, and Lila, you can add on. You know, it's one of the most common tools when you look at housing and housing challenges, one of the most common tools people look at, a short-term rental. We aren't necessarily looking at it in the, in the frame point of limiting, because oftentimes it's what actually makes it feasible for people to stay here by having a short-term rental income. And so I think really what the, the goal is in the plan is to evaluate what makes sense for Park County with short-term rentals. And I will say as an example, as Lila mentioned in her presentation, you know, we launched the Big Sky Community Housing Trust in Big Sky. They are really successful using an incentive program to actually have people who own short-term rentals convert them to longer-term rentals and giving them an incentive, cash incentive to do so. I mean, so it is not prescribed in any way, shape or form. It's, it's looking at them as part of our housing continuum and housing solutions, and how can we make that to our advantage? And that could be allowing them, it could be, you know, different communities use different tools, but any tool would go through a very public process, because it would, if, if it were coming that sense. At Big Sky, we're doing it as an incentive, very successfully. There's no regulation, no, it's funded by actual foundations that live and work in that community to provide the cash incentives to those short-term rental owners to do six-month rentals. So depending on the time that they do that, they get a greater incentive if they do three months, six months, nine months, 12 months. So it's actually contributing.
Excuse me, it, it's not really a tax incentive if a foundation's paying it?
It's cash incentives to the short-term rental owner.
Cash incentive, not tax.
Cash.
Excuse me.
Yes, yeah.
Sorry.
No, it's cash incentive, yeah, from a foundation that's investing to help convert that, to open up those for folks who live and work in Big Sky community. So it could come in any form or shape, and we're not attached to any outside of exploring how we can make the best use of that.
I would wonder how that would make the people feel that have stuck it out with the long-term rentals, to see that the people that had SDRs now, going back to long-term, are going to get paid this big massive amount of money to make up the difference. It's, I would, I would fear that it would really upset them, and it might cause them to say, I'm just going to go back, I'm just going to turn my place into an STR. It might, it, it could be, just a thought, I just wondered if you had considered that.
And those are all things we would take into consideration. And again, if that's a recommendation that the group is exploring, they're going to take all of those perspectives and evaluations before they make a recommendation.
Yeah, I would add that, you know, this, this plan is a set of areas to look at with a values-driven approach. And it does have the word regulation, but so broad of, we don't have, there's no specific policy proposal on that, and it is one that comes up a lot. We have really limited tools that we can access to address this top community concern. And, you know, we don't know exactly what the community conversation around values and priorities would look like. But the goal, the goal is to have housing opportunities for residents to live and thrive. And that might mean having the income of a short-term rental. It might, we just want to know more about how that's impacting the community and what the options are. We don't have any specific recommendation in the housing action plan on what that would be. We also took the time to take that one out during the public draft period to have a conversation about it, which is recorded on the parkcountyhousing.com website and I think a couple other places. And we just wanted people to know, you know, that it's, that it would be a values-driven conversation, and it's not a specific prescriptive regulation in any way. There's limited ability to even do that if that was the intent. So there's, there's that kind of piece, as well as, you know, short-term rentals have been around for a long time at this period, and most community, most peer communities have taken some sort of approach to learning about their impact. So we're just recommending that it's kind of the time to look at what that could mean, because we need to have a balanced local housing strategy from all of these different angles. We have limited ways to do that, and if we want to be able to provide housing for our families and friends and neighbors, we need to look at all of the things on the table. From an education standpoint, I just wanted to mention this because it's come up a couple times, but the plan references the resource localhousingsolutions.org, which is a really phenomenal encyclopedia of all of the housing information. So instead of each tool going into like a full analysis of if, could, what would it look like, we recommend that people do some research, and that's a great starting point of what that could look like, of what peer communities have done, and what those definitions are, what the potential fiscal impacts, all of that is available. We don't want to reinvent that wheel since they keep it fresh for us. So yeah, short-term rental is definitely one that comes up a lot, but I just want to, want to iterate that it would be a values-driven process. Whoever is leading that, that's the recommendation, and there's no specific tool. This plan is looking at what we can do at a higher level, it's not targeting a specific.
So could, could I ask you another question? Sometimes I read things wrong. Does it, does, is there a recommendation in there to talk about limiting SDRs?
It's putting it on the agenda of, is this something that we want to do? I think that the data collection is really important, not something that, not something that the housing coalition can do for one. We are not the decision-making authority on that, or HRC, like we don't, we don't get to make that choice. So we're just encouraging as a recommendation to look at that as an agenda item on the table of, is this something that is right for the community? And it would, it probably would be limiting in certain places, when you think about what's practical and possible, given the current regulation. So it might be limiting in certain areas, say in the downtown area of Livingston, versus, just an example, not a specific policy proposal. But it might leave the county out of that conversation. It's, we don't know yet. It's such a, it's such a can of worms that it kind of, I feel like when we get too far into the weeds on short-term rentals, lose sight of the need for a balanced housing strategy to meet the entire housing continuum. So we need to look at shelter and homeownership and how we can do, dump payments, and all of these other things together, and that short-term rental is one that definitely drives up the attention. And we're happy to carry that conversation if we get to it.
So, uh... Hang on one second.
Okay.
Tia?
I'm sorry.
Oh, no problem, Brian, but it, but I was just, I...
I'm hogging the floor.
I wanted to take it because I wasn't going to address that, that specific conversation.
Um, I lost it.
Sorry.
Welcome to my world. Were, were there some STR representatives on this group?
I do believe some people owned some. I didn't do like a full, well, when I started, the, the housing working group had been assembled already, so I had a colleague that was leading this for this. And that was at the end of 2020. I think they, they did a public application process. I think that everyone that applied, honestly, was probably as a member. But they filled out a form of why they were interested in different perspectives, and I don't have that in front of me, but there was definitely some vested interest in the perspective of short-term rentals that came up frequently. I don't know how many they owned or where they're located, but we, we had a variety of perspectives and robust conversation about what that looks like in the plan. And I think that what, where it settled was that we went through, you know, we did a one, one person, one voice, one vote in the plan as well, so there was a balance. And it's, they're in order of the kind of popularity within the group, and it's really far down the list. So people thought it's worth having the conversation, but it's not their top priority, and it's not, yeah, it's, it's not necessarily, there was an agreement on how we should propose a policy.
Just one more thing and I'll quit, okay? Okay, I'm sorry.
No, we're lucky, because sometimes you don't talk for months on end, so we're happy to hear this.
Blood pressure's down.
Okay.
It says in, it says in there that they need to be licensed and, and regulated and kept track of for health and safety issues. I'm wondering, do you have any data on people getting sick and hurt because they stayed in the vacation rental? Are, are we, are we trying to create?
Well, well, let me, let me back up to what Mike said in terms of...
The COVID.
COVID, I mean, kind of keeping an eye on where people are, if you need, how do you do any, you know, tracing if you got a pandemic? But...
And fires and other...
Yeah, emergency situations.
Yes. We did have a couple conversations with some of the, the national experts on this, because as I mentioned, like a lot of communities have decided that they want to take on this issue, particularly communities that have so much toward them. It's, there's a lot of regional examples to look at. So we can see, we're lucky to be a late adopter, to be able to understand what the impacts are when other communities have fled on experimenting ahead of us, which is a nice benefit to be in that position. But the life safety stuff is more around, like, it's not, it's not pandemic specific, it's just being able to know and understand. And the same quality and regulations and reasons that hotels have, you know, you have to have a fire inspector, you have to have access, there, there's just some things of that nature.
And, and, and I just want to tell you where I'm coming from. If, if, if this gets, if this gets attached to the Park County growth policy, I know it's not regulatory at all, but it will be used in the future, because people always pointed to Goal 16 to propose the zoning. So in the future, they'll point to the STR, well, we need to limit SDRs, it's in the growth policy. You see, that's, that's my concern, and, and my other huge concern is people don't know what's happening. And that, I really think that's a failure, and we, we have failed that way too. But there's, uh, there's ways to inform people, that poster right there in all the, in the grocery stores, churches, post offices, that, that's just one way of, of getting people involved. I mean, if you put a poster up like, like that all over, all over rural Park County and said you were going to start looking at regulating SDRs, you would have some participation big time. And, and I, I think that's what we need to do, but I'll, I'll be, but thanks, thanks for your hard work and, and answering my questions, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do you remember?
Yeah, I do, I do. And, and, and it was, Brian, what he just said was a nice segue, because I really, I think sometimes with adopting something like this plan, you know, to be added to the growth policy, it can feel very like, like a conclusion. And I really think this is actually the starting point. So I think when it's adopted and it's in the growth policy, that is the starting point for this community engagement, right? Because when we look at these recommendations and we start going forward, this is, this is when we will engage community in these very specific tools and recommendations. So I really see it as a starting point for engagement, more so than it didn't happen.
Can you have a question?
Well, can I, can I ask, first of all, just to clarify a que, a question.
Who are you and?
Uh, well, my name's Jamie Isley and I live at, uh, 27 Queen Creek Road. Um, I, so I just wanna clarify that there's really not, it doesn't specifically say that it limits, uh, right? It's, what, what, what you're suggesting is short-term rentals are one of the many things that we have to consider when we're looking at our housing and our struggles for housing, right? And I just, and I do wanna make a comment. I am a short-term home rental, uh, renter. And I've been, um, I've also been a long-term renter here in the Livingston for a lot of years. I've no longer do the long-term, but I still have a short-term rental. And I think it should be, you know, noted that yes, while especially during the summer season, we have, you know, tenants that come in for a week at a time, four days at a time and things like that. We also provide, I think, as that, you know, come November, we're then renting maybe for six months to somebody. Oftentimes that's for a traveling nurse. It's for people who are building a home and they had to leave and they're looking for a place to stay until that home is built and, or, and those kinds of things. And I would say, um, especially those in town, and some of the rural ones are very much used in that way, that they are still providing a certain amount of housing. It might not be as long a term as we would like, but it's certainly, I know we have solved many people's issues of where are we gonna go for the six months? And I feel like the short-term housing does provide that vehicle as, as far as, and it's, there, there are some positive aspects to it besides the income that's generated, uh, that, you know, and that.
Thank you. Go for it, Christina.
Have you guys ever thought about the ones that are retirees moving here? Because they are coming here to be home and then they turn around and they're not providing to the employment that we need in our area and all of that kind of stuff too. There's, you know. Anything else that goes just, just like the vacation rentals and everything else? And same with the ones that are here. Their job is being in New York, but they, they're, and that affects us too in the way that they take a house, that they don't provide to our, you know, to our jobs needed. A variety of different things that need to be looked at also. I guess we're gonna look at pinpoints.
Another incentive that we've seen work well in some other resort or high tourism communities is voluntary deed restrictions, again, incentive, dollar incentive, but it places a deed, it's a volun, someone voluntarily places a deed restriction on their property to keep it affordable. But the deed restriction is that the owner or one adult member of the household has to work at least 30 hours a week in that community. I mean, so those are things that other communities are doing across the country that again, it's a volun, it's not a requirement, it's not a regulation. It's a program that can be offered where people opt into because they wanna keep home prices affordable for working people. So those are different incentives that we can absolutely look at as part of programming that we can move forward.
Oh, and I guess her too. I actually like that, um, being landlords that there's actually consequences. They don't follow through with stuff. They lose, you know, their opportunity of getting assistance and all that. So I have less issues. And so if there's a way that you could figure out how to hold people more accountable for their actions, whether it be they are forced to do community service, because you know they're not gonna pay their rent and they're not gonna pay for the damage they did, any of that stuff. If there were things that could be done in that direction, I think that would maybe hold people more accountable. And it would cut down on the cost of the monthly rentals. You'd have more monthly rentals probably with that and the rent probably wouldn't cost as much. Because I know in the last two, three years, um, I've put way more money aside for damage that I figured than I ever have in the past.
Yeah, so are you suggesting like a pool for landlords to pull from for damages and?
No, I'm talking about holding those people who do the damage accountable.
Oh, sure. I mean, that's more of a legal issue than a housing policy.
I don't know if that's something to do with like working with, you know, local government, um, that kind of stuff with. That to be put in place. Those are the things that I know drive people out of the monthly rental versus, right, just make way more money on vacation rentals because there's a lot more expenses with vacation rentals. So they don't really need that much more.
Yeah.
And then along with that, um, the employee housing, um. I just, it makes me nervous that it sounds good for people, for businesses, um, to go and do that. But there's so many legal things that could affect them if they were to purchase it and they just go and purchase it in their business name, then it connects with their business and it cuts down on everything. So if that stuff is, um, gonna push tomorrow, I would hope that there would be some more advice given to businesses because that could really kill our economy if there is that.
So, so did you, if I might just add on to what, what Christina said, did you talk to, um, like the, the sage folks who are doing their yurt thing and so forth? And Xantera built places, whether you like it or not, that's another story totally and we won't involve Jeff reading that. But you, you know, um, tell, tell us what you heard from those folks.
So we're not recommending the plan that businesses individually purchase and lend to their employees. I think that's exactly what we want to help mitigate is that tied relationship between an employee being a landlord and his employer. We wanna be able to provide more opportunities to collectively meet the demand for, um, all kinds of workforce housing and where an employer could, you know, have options to hire somebody if they needed to move here or have options for their employee to help stay here and, and add a layer of, um, separation between that so that we're able to take a broader scope and try to meet the needs of the community for employers and residents. One of, so the Workforce Housing Group is, is looking at that. And as, as I mentioned earlier, kind of like really taking time to understand that specific aspect of the complicated web of all of these proposals is looking at what the need for the large and small employers is, where they're seeing barriers and maybe looking at doing some focus groups with people that have, um, short and long-term rentals to understand what those pieces are so that we can look at what our peer communities have done to help that are most similar to our exact needs. And, um, it might look like providing housing where, yeah, there's like, you need to work 30 hours within the county or you need to, I don't, I don't know what the community wants and what that process will yield. I'm not sure yet, but we're taking an approach that we think will help try to balance all of those different perspectives.
So the thing that you said, the complex web. I know for a fact that Livingston Healthcare did not get people, care providers, to come here because there wasn't housing. And, um, I, I know as sure as the rest of us do here that if you want somebody to really invest in this community, it's probably preferable for them to live in Park County. It's different. People have different allegiance if they live elsewhere. So this is a complex web. I think what we ought to do is, is, are there other questions here that people have? I'm, I'm.
I have a bunch.
Oh, go for it, Christine. Christina, excuse me.
Well, I just, um. I just wanna be clear, we are not in any way, shape or form recommending that employers provide their own housing. We're actually recommending that we all work together to create more housing so that all employers benefit from it rather than each of them trying to do their own thing.
To.
I'm kinda confused.
Point, point, kind of clarification. Board's considering this, we're considering this plan, not necessarily the outcomes that may come from a process in the future that you may or may not like. So this plan is before us, the process used is before us. It's part of our growth policy that we're supposed to have a Housing Action Plan and support that. We were lucky enough to have somebody else do it. So that plan is before you. And this is, I'll go back to the growth policy, it's a good example. Take an active role in land use complex, Goal 16, in the growth policy.
Yep.
That our board after it was adopted wanted to focus on, that's what we've worked on for five years. During the growth policy, people said, don't adopt this growth policy because it's gonna lead to zoning. And the zoning might take away my private property right or it might make me paint my house a certain color and I don't like that, so don't adopt the growth policy. But we did adopt the growth policy and a lot of people participated. And then we went through the painful process of considering all of those types of things. So I think the board needs to be really careful that we're not diving into hypothetical outcomes when we haven't gone through that process. It's important to focus on what the goals and recommendations are relative to process so that we don't get stuck into futuristic things that we can't control because we haven't gone through any of those procedures.
Just gonna say also, I almost, I, I know you two here are representing, but I almost wish there were coalition members here because I think we assume you will be making these decisions and it actually will be a very community-driven process.
Uh, there's a lot of fun events happening this evening that we're hard to compete with. Apologies on that, but we did communicate out the opportunity with a number of people that said, said, they told, I got a lot of.
Yeah, we wanted to go those other events too.
Like call.
But yeah, and I, I mean, I think any recommendation in there is gonna be vetted through a full public engagement process of what is the right tool or mechanism that works for this community or Park County on this topic, right? This is just a map of, we started with, there's probably 70-some tools that communities use. The Coalition narrowed that down to 12 or so that they think will work for Park County. But how any of those move forward would be a whole other process involving public engagement and a lot of community conversation. Actually recommend something specific moving forward.
Well, I just, I have lots of questions and I have, but I just am nervous that if some of these.
Some of that is the Housing Coalition and some of it is, would be the counties, some of it would be the cities. There's, you know, towards the end of the plan, you look at who is responsible for different parts of it. And, you know, there, there's a variety of different tools. And the lead implementer is kind of the one charged with doing that outreach part. Um, I also would like to kind of remind, or speak to the perspective of like what, what is happening in our communities and if we do nothing. And, um, this is a list of strategies and they're broad and they're all requiring deeper dives. Um, and they have complex, hard work to be done to unpack each of those tools. But the cost of not doing anything, we're hearing about unbelievably high vacancies at our most critical positions that are running the community. And that is, that's what we want to address. And that each of these is gonna have its own tough conversation, but we think it's worth having for the goal of the plan to create more opportunities for residents that are here now and in the future that do wanna live and thrive in this community. So I think from the broad perspective, that, you know, what is, what is the cost of not pursuing these? Something I'd like to keep in mind.
The less government kind of is a benefit in a lot of ways also. Especially like the rental properties, um, the land, uh, renters have more rights than landlords now. So if there were some of those things were to go away or change a little bit, maybe you'd have more monthly rentals instead of vacation rentals. Along with the cost would.
Are you talking about county things? Are you talking about county things?
That's state.
The state.
Yeah, but that's, but can't we go approach them as, I mean, can't as a group go and try to approach the state on those things, to fix those things?
Absolutely.
Yeah, because if not, then you're not fixing anything. You're just causing more issues locally to add to the state, to add to the federal ones too. So that's where I think, look at some of the things that are causing these issues and go to them versus just another way of, of doing things and giving and giving and giving. And that's the other thing too, is some of these programs are great and they were meant for a really good purpose, but they are so taken advantage of and people play with them. And you'd be able to help more people who need it if you focused more on the ones that don't need it, that get it. I see it, I haven't seen it.
You're talking about like evictions and the like of evictions and so forth like that?
Yeah, and the fact, and the assistance, um, like Section 8 housing or, you know, the one that was put in place for COVID, which I know was state-level. Those things, but even, I know this is not just the housing stuff, but even when I have the daycare, there were parents that had a small co-pay and the state paid the rest of their childcare and they worked part-time. And then you have one that works two jobs and she had a bigger co-pay and all this other stuff. And it's like, everything seems to be backwards for, you know, they're just, there's, those things need to be looked at. And then we wouldn't, we'd have more money to help with the systems we already have in place to help the ones that need it. And it would then also help with having more rentals.
Certainly one of the pieces that will come out of this is policy recommendations that the county or the city or the coalition wants to move forward. And that would be part of that conversation, right? If we, as a coalition, wanna advocate with the State Housing Coalition for adjustments due to their Housing Act or any of those things, those would all come out of the policy pieces of the plan. Those are all policy-driven things. If, in a coalition, absolutely will annually and every session have a policy agenda and that's where those pieces would come out. And what are the policy pieces that we wanna take to higher levels of government and recommend? Whether that's state and/or federal program level policy pieces, those can certainly be part of.
I have a, a question in terms of, tell me please, I love what, when you were talking about, you know, stalking horses, other communities that have done a good job on this. Give me a few names of them so I can dig around.
I think that there's no community that hasn't figured it out. This is a national challenge.
Yeah, but the ones like us.
But there are places where communities are implementing certain tools really well. Um, and I think that that's where I look. So I think of like, well, you know, well, first I think what is, what is the real problem that I want this tool to solve is just the right tool? And then I would look at what other communities are doing. And some of them are, I don't think that there is like exactly a Livingston that. I don't think that there is like exactly a Livingston that has a great housing strategy. Um, the local housing solutions website does, starts to create a comparison of places with more of a balance. Um, and you can use that to look at places that are more similar. There's nowhere exactly the same. Um, I would look at rural communities with tourism as peers for certain policies, but not for every policy. Do you have any specific?
I mean, so we look at what's working, as Lila said, in other communities. For example, the voluntary de-restruction program comes out of Vail, Colorado, which is more like a resort town, but it's a town that's really struggling with workforce, right? So where we're looking at is policies that positively impact workforce housing, where you have housing available to your workforce. And then, so that those are communities that are implementing that successfully. But, uh, as Lila said, there's not one community that has got it figured out, and they know the right combination. Everyone's testing out multiple things, and we can see what's working from each of those communities and try and pair that for what might work here. But there's not like a X community that's got it dialed, and we want to mirror that. There are policies or programs that are working in similar communities that we would want to learn more about.
And, and part of what I've seen is that some of the communities have the greatest success. There's different enabling mechanisms at state levels.
Yes.
And that's a big deal. My, my son lives near Glenwood Springs, Colorado. Not unlike Livingston in many, many ways, right down to the hot springs, but it's really different.
Yep.
In terms of how they get and keep people working.
One of the, yeah, one of the biggest things that works in a lot of other states, right, is, um, uh, real estate transfer tax, which is a, a, a-
Say again, please.
Real estate transfer tax is something that a lot of other states use to fund a lot of housing development. It's, um, something that's not legal in the state of Montana. So there's a lot of tools that other states have that, um, are available at the local level to implement or not implement that are not necessarily available, um, in the state of Montana.
Okay. I'm going to, um, call on Brian.
Two more?
Yeah.
And please forgive me if I'm beating this horse to death, but I went to Park High. So sometimes I don't understand what I'm reading. In recommendations, number two, it says, "City of Livingston and Park County partner to create standards for STRs, including increasing the registration fee for STRs to cover administrative costs, and consider a maximum percentage of dwelling units by the community." Doesn't that mean limiting possibly at some point?
I think that again comes from other communities where they've limited both geographically or they want it to not exceed a certain portion of, um, units. I mean, that's a best practice that other communities are doing. Certainly something we would want to-
But that's not my question because, because I, I think Mr. Esely understood that it, there wasn't nothing in here about limiting STRs, and I'm reading it different for some reason.
The intent of that sentence is more as an example. So when I said, saying, "Consider," and then listing some ways that other communities have considered, um, there's just, there's only so vague that I could write a sentence without including some examples of ideas for it. They want people to know what, what the conversation would look like. That's what it would look like, um, to participate in that conversation. So it's not saying that, it's not assigning a specific number or percentage, but it is, it is best practice, and in most communities that have some of the challenges and percentages of short-term rentals that exist in Park County have at least had a discussion around like a, a portion of that.
So I was reading it right.
That's one of the things that we could consider. It's again, not a specific question.
Thanks, thanks.
Well, Brian, just so you know too, the county's already looking at increasing registration fees.
Yeah.
And when it comes to capping short-term rental, well, we're not there yet, but we probably have thirty percent short-term rentals in Park County, given the number of housing houses we have. I think it's close to seven thousand houses. Um, and we have fourteen hundred, so we're probably closer to that, um, to twenty percent. There are some communities that are pushing sixty-plus percent. And so those communities are trying to figure out how to keep our residents viable.
Yeah, I look at this thing as a both-and, rather than e- either-or. I, I, I'm going to suggest that we pause, um, recess this hearing. And I have a number of reasons. I'll look for people pushing back on me on that if appropriate. I think that you've gotten some things to think about here, and so have we. Three of our members are not present, and I value their voices. So I would like to include them in, in this discussion such as they can. We'll bring them up to date. We're not going to start over. They can look at what we're doing here. Uh, and there may be other voices that want to get in the room so we could have more conversations. And so the, the, the takeaway for me is that there's, the board believes that, as do you, that housing is a linchpin to the success economically of the future. And we also believe, as you've heard here, that there are lots of different ways most days of getting into the park. I mean, you know, and we need to think about that. There's not one that's necessarily the be-all and end-all, there's lots of different ways of doing this. I think that it's important for, we've learned that if it, if it's things that are going to cost people more, everybody more, to get a little bit of this, there's going to be pushback. There will be pushback, that's a fact. Um, the other thing is, uh, not that we've come up with the magic sauce. We got to figure out a way of getting this out into the mind's eye of the people out in the community that tells them what this is, what it's not, and if, when they don't understand, we can help them to understand more. Or finally say, you know, this is the best, we've done, this is, this is a road. It's not, it's not the destination, so to speak. And, um, I think that it's important, if we're going to put this in as an addendum to the growth policy, that we think really careful about it. And I want to do some more thinking about it and get the other three folks in here. Um, I, I'm supportive of it, hear that clearly. And I think, uh, seeing everybody nodding here, I mean, you know, uh, Brian started out that way. Anne, we've got some stuff to do. I think Anne brought up some excellent points about, are there places where you can look at definitions that meet the needs of the reader in the community that may not know the, all the nuances? Um, I mean, public engagement was the thing that we really need to think about, and it might be useful for you folks to have an idea on how, how to, how to do that. I think that we've run the, um, STR thing pretty far. Um, it, I mean, the, the public engagement, the perception of lack of public input, I think is a, is a big deal. I have not enjoyed the past few months with, as much as we've all tried to do it, but not been successful. We really have tried hard.
Just to add- Going to add that I would, if we are going to extend, uh, I would very much encourage, if possible, for coalition members, um, to be, to be present, um, so we can also hear their voice.
Can I make a suggestion?
Brian?
Since, since it involves rural, rural Park County and Paradise Valley in particular, you can hardly throw a rock without hitting an STR owner. I think it would have been really, and maybe you did it, would have a meeting at Immigrant, meeting at Pine Creek, a meeting at Springdale, a meeting at Cokedale, a meeting in Shields Valley, to, to include the input-
Immigrant culture.
Of rural Park County. You know, hav- having sat in meetings with groups of people who disagree on everything, and watching them come up with ideas is, is one of the most amazing things I've ever seen. Because if you have a group of people that are all on the same page, y- you don't get a very good product. But if you have people that are not on the same page, coming, finding common ground, you come up with a pretty, pretty cool project, or a pretty cool product.
And I'll just reiterate, if we were actually recommending something, and we had something, we wouldn't be having those conversations in those communities. We're not at that point yet. This is just a list of things we should explore as a community to further housing opportunities moving forward. So that would be the next step from here. We would take, okay, STRs was one of the things on the list, so to have that conversation with each community, with every group, and talk about what we want to do with that, if we want to do anything. But we're not there yet. It was just one of the things on the list, python down from seventy-two tu- tools to the twelve or so tools we think we should explore further for, to benefit residents of Park County. So that would be the next step, for sure, is, is there a short-term rental something that we think we should move forward? Or is it or not? And that would be the next step of exploring that item in there.
Also, the feasibility, um, the county did not contribute to adding financially at all to the planning process of adding this to the growth policy. Uh, we did present the draft while it was in comment stage to both the city and the planning board and the general public, who tried really hard to reach people, um, on that topic. And we did have coalition members at a number of events. I'm sorry that none of them are here this evening, um, including when it was in draft stage and collected feedback in that format. I think that the cost of the kind of process that that would be might potentially detract from being able to dive deeper into when we get to implementation and thinking of, you know, where the role of the, the county does need to play a role in getting that conversation going, uh, if that's a value of that. I think that we're pretty limited in the ability to have, um, that level of engagement without looking at how we can partner further with, uh, the county and the city on that.
So John, point of order, we've closed the public hearing. You guys are in your discussion. You can recess your discussion to a specified date, time.
Yeah.
And I apologize if this thing's cold, non, but-
Nope, nope, you, you, you had told me what, what to do here.
And so even if people show up at the next meeting, they're not taking more public comment. Those comments would go to the county commissioners for their consideration. We have to have a public hearing, we have to open that public hearing, we have to take public comment, and at some point we have to close that public comment portion at the board level.
The comments, if we recess now, there will be no additional comments.
They, people could come and comment all they want, that would not be part of your consideration. You're going to have to go through each of the comments that have been provided as part of this public hearing requirement. We had to follow state law when we did this. And so when it goes to county commissioners, any comments that we receive between now and your guys' final decision are still acceptable, but they would go to the county commissioners, and they would have to consider them. Once the county commissioners make their decision, any comments received after the fact is outside of that process. Make sense?
You, you wouldn't believe that we just went through three hours of training on this, and Mike's clarifying it very well.
Might be part of further discussion among the board. We would be able to ask questions, right?
Yes, you could ask questions. So the other board members, if you recessed it, we would make sure they had all the comments, and they had access to this recorded meeting so they could watch it, we would hope that they would, so that they could show up and be well-versed in what this discussion was, and come prepared to continue the discussion of the board and potential recommendations of county commissioners.
And we can ask questions of, of experts from the housing coalition though-
You can still ask.
At an, at an additional meeting. Points of clarification.
Correct.
Very well.
And I agree, I think we got to be careful here, I mean, we just went through this. One, conflict of interest, I want the board to think long and hard about that. Nobody divulged any conflict of interest tonight, and I think there's some considerations that the board members should think about, especially when you get into specifics within this plan. Two, we've got to really think about what this plan is, not, we've got to be really careful that we don't go too far in making determinations based on outcomes that there's no process for at this point.
It, as an addendum to the county growth policy, you would have the same level of actionableness, if you will, as the growth policy, right?
The county commissioners would have to make decisions to pursue anything-
Yeah.
-in the growth policy, given that this is an addendum. They could choose not to. They could say, "We're not going to do anything, we're not touching anything." They have that authority to do that.
Right.
They don't have to have this in order to move forward with anything that's in here, or anything else they want to consider. So again, this is a plan, went through a process to create the plan, and this would provide it as a resource to, um, to further movement in the direction of dealing with housing. So I think that's just, we just got to be careful.
Excellent point, thank you.
One more thing. I, I want to say thanks for a great discussion, and your willingness to sit here and answer questions. Thanks a lot.
So, I mean, we're all, we're all on the same side of the table. It just doesn't look that way in here right now, you know, physically. I mean, we care about the community we live in, we want the best for it for now and for the future. And we want to have as much involvement in our, in our constituent community as possible, amongst other things. All right, this, this, the hearing was held, the comments, we're suspending this discussion, we're, um, recessing this discussion until the next, uh, planning board meeting. If, uh, I'm not seeing anybody that's saying you're crazy.
August eighteenth, five p.m., Thursday.
So there, there's a, are we good? Um, anybody's not going to be able to make it, I want to hear that now. Make it.
I'll be there.
And we'll do it, I mean, for those that are out here, maybe we can get Dustin off the tractor, tractor far enough that he can at least zoom in. Uh, will there be somebody available from the planning board for that meeting?
Yep.
Okay.
Do you want, do you need to name the location?
Um, here.
Want it to be a hybrid meeting, like-
Yes.
Okay.
I want people to be able to be just like this one.
Okay.
Better, I'm being a kind of bossy, sorry.
I, we, when you, whatever you recess-
You like it, you like it, okay.
Whenever you recess a public hearing discussion, you have to name everything.
Okay.
Date, the time, the location, the place.
Thank you very much.
Otherwise, we have to go through the legal notifications, and we'll probably run another legal notice just, just because.
Everyone wear the same clothing, right?
The same clothing as today, we'll just like pretend that it's just going on.
The short reset.
Are there any other comments or questions from the board at this hearing? Wait, uh, pla- any planning board updates?
Board planning staff.
The planning staff updates, planning department updates.
Um, a lot of flooding. Yeah, we've been dealing a lot with the flooding, post-flooding, which has actually been going pretty well. Um, we continue to meet with CNRC and FEMA reps. Um, we haven't seen a lot of committee coming in, but we're anticipating that. We have resources available to us should we need them. So I think everything is going about as well as it can, considering what happened. Um, outside of that, we have our compliance officer who will be moving forward with probably his first enforcement proceeding, um, in the county, which has been a long time coming. And Ashley Smith, our new compliance officer, has been working with between various departments, and with our attorney's office, and with, um, the justice court to try to hone in on our process and make sure everybody's on board. Um, I think it couldn't come at a better time, there's a lot of violations we're seeing relative to water sanitation, subdivision, body act, sanitation, uh, water treatment facilities. So I think it'll, it should work pretty well, we're pretty excited on that.
And she reports to the commissioners or?
She is the department head, she reports to the county commissioners. Um, and it's, it's an area that we've received a lot of criticism for a long time, and we're excited that we'll have somebody that's dedicated to try and ensure that it's an easy playing field for everybody out in Park County, and to deal with some of the public health issues that we're seeing. the issues that we're seeing.
Regular administrative permitting, it's always busy in the summer, on top of the flooding requests, which. Boston and I are on the Montana Association of Planners. We're anticipating a lot of potential changes in the next legislative session. We participated in the governor's housing task force meeting yesterday, so I, which also illustrated there's, we're looking at the subdivision planning act, zoning, growth policy. So I have a feeling that we're going to see an entirely new set of regulatory tools or lack thereof after the next session. To make the difficult, because for those that are, you develop, the rub could get pulled out from under them halfway through a project. For communities who are looking at implementing various policies, procedures or, or goals or strategies, it could be a new regulatory framework, you know? And it just depends on whether things are retroactive or not and how they apply. But I know that there has been a lot of potential changes though.
Board correspondence? Move on, discussion decision on future agenda items. We've already got the continuation of this discussion on the agenda for our August meeting in this very place. Are there any other subdivision things or thing that are not ready yet?
Probably not by next month, but.
Okay. That'll be our primary agenda item. It'll be a hybrid meeting. Are there any additional public comments on things that were not on the agenda?
This is for when they're on the agenda.
Oh, this is for when they're on the agenda, sorry.
Or just anything, actually, anything.
You can talk about anything. Any other public comments? If you have ways of encouraging other citizens to sit in our meetings, that would be wonderful. This is the lowest citizen participation that we've had at a meeting in two years.
First meeting in public that everybody demanded for two and a half years and one member of the public plus a potential representative showed up.
My member of the public too, yeah.
There you go.
Hearing no additional public comments. I'll thank also those that were here. Thank every.
Yeah, thanks for having us.
Staff for doing everything good that helps to make us stay on the rails pretty much. Motion for adjournment. Brian?
Yeah.
Brian, motion, and Christina seconded, all in favor, say aye. Aye, we are adjourned.
Good job. Thanks.